Mayor O'Connor, we are recording.
Thank you.
If I may, this is Zoe Burgess, your city clerk. This regular city council meeting of November 7th, 2023 is being held with a quorum of City of Westlake council physically in attendance at the Lodge at Westlake Adventure Park, 5490 King Fisher Boulevard. Public comments may be accepted utilizing the electronic comment card available on the city's website. Public comments are permitted at the appropriate time. The mayor will call for such during public comment and you may participate utilizing the system's virtual hand feature and waiting to be acknowledged. Please note this meeting is being recorded both voice and video and to remember your mic may be live. I will mute any microphones that carry any feedback or interruptions. If you are a caller that has been muted, you may unmute yourself by pressing star six. Any person in the virtual meeting causing a disruption or being inappropriate will be removed. If I may also remind those physically in attendance, please utilize microphones so that the virtual audience and a clear recording of the meeting is produced. Thank you, Mayor O'Connor.
Madam Clerk, I would like to go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of November 7th, 2023 into order at exactly 6:01 PM. Line call, please.
Councilwoman Leonard, present. Councilwoman Martinez, present. Councilwoman Vayeron, present. Vice Mayor Lingowski, present. Mayor O'Connor, present. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Let's all stick your table and join us. Ludgely, to the United States and to the Republic, one nation, one country, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal. Thank you, be seated. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications of the agenda? If none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Lingowski, seconded by Councilwoman Vayeron. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard, yes. Councilwoman Martinez, yes. Councilwoman Vayeron, yes. Vice Mayor Lingowski, yes. Mayor O'Connor, yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move forward to public comments and requests. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium or unmute your device. And prior to addressing the council, please state your name and address for the record. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comments?
Mayor, I received no previous comment cards. However, we'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise a virtual hand or unmute their device if they've been muted. If you're a caller that has been muted, you may press star six to speak. Please state your name and address. You will have three minutes. Mayor, we have a comment from Ms. Torres.
Hi, everybody. Alicia Torres. Yeah, hi. Alicia Torres, 5847 Whipperwell Circle. I believe this is a question for Attorney Duty. Is he present?
He is.
Okay, so I was just noticing in the qualifying information for city council, it talks about how you have to be a resident and maintain residency. But then I was looking at the charter and I didn't see any guidelines for if one of the city council members were to move out of the city. And I was just curious what happens in that case, just because the four-year terms, you know, they're pretty long. So I was wondering about that. Thank you.
I didn't hear the question.
Is there a way to turn up the volume? One second, Ms. Torres. Attorney Duty had trouble hearing you. You may have to repeat. We're working on turning up the volume in here so you can repeat it.
Okay, yeah, let me know when to try again.
Or speak directly a little louder into her microphone.
Okay.
A little bit.
Give us just a moment. We have to get someone from the lodge. Ms. Torres, you want to try one more time for us, please?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me better?
That's much better.
Okay, great. So my question was with regard to city council members and their residency. I noticed qualification information that it does say not only that you have to be a resident at qualifying, but you have to maintain residency. So I was just wondering, you know, when I looked in the city charter, I didn't see any guidelines as to how to deal with, you know, in the K version move. So I was just curious, if within a four-year term, if a city council member moves out of the city, what happens? Is there another election or an appointment? That was kind of my curiosity. Thank you.
I don't have the charter in front of me, so you'll have to excuse me, but generally charters provide for the filling of a vacancy in two ways. Depending on the remaining term of that particular elected official, the council would have the opportunity to make an appointment. If there isn't a length of time that exceeds maybe six months, you would call for a special election.
Okay, simple enough answer. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
We'll give the virtual audience additional time. If you have a public comment, please raise your virtual hand. State your name and address. You have three minutes. Mayor, there's no additional comments.
Thank you. Moving forward to presentations. Sorry, let's go with consent agenda. This section of the agenda consists of routine or administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There'll be no discussion of these items unless a council member requests such, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Lingowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Martinez, yes. Councilwoman Vayeron, yes. Vice Mayor Lingowski, yes. Mayor O'Connor, yes. Councilwoman Leonard, yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Excellent. We have before us a proclamation in remembrance and appreciation of veterans sponsored by Vice Mayor Greg Lingowski, which I will now read into the record. In remembrance and appreciation of veterans, whereas our veterans represent the very best of America, they have bravely answered the call to serve in the finest military force in the world, and they have earned the dignity that comes with wearing the uniform and defending our great flag. And on Veterans Day, we remember these heroes for their valor, loyalty, dedication, and encourage all Americans to recognize the fortitude and sacrifice of our veterans through public ceremonies and private thoughts and prayers. And whereas we continue to be inspired by the patriotism and dedication of those in uniform who continue to defend the principles on which our nation was founded, and whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans do not come without a price, our nation's veterans have sacrificed to preserve and protect our country and constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And whereas throughout our history, courageous men and women have donned the uniform of our armed forces and built a noble tradition of faithful and dedicated service to our nation. And whereas the abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideas on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Westlake, I, John Paul O'Connor, mayor of the city of Westlake, by virtue of the authority vested in me, honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. And further, I am sincerely grateful for the service and sacrifice of veterans. I call upon the residents of the city of Westlake to join me in honoring the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. I will gladly sign this right. New business. Resolution 2023-30. Amendment to the Special Revenue Fund Comprehensive Planning Services Budget for Fiscal Year 2023. City Attorney, please read by title.
Yes, sir. Resolution by Title Only, Resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving the amendment to the Special Revenue Fund Comprehensive Planning Services Budget for Fiscal Year 2023. Providing for conflict, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Can we get some explanation from this, from our city manager representative?
Sir, if I can address it.
Sure, please.
It's not necessarily a legal issue, but I've been in a couple of meetings in my life, so this is really more of a housekeeping item. Subsequent to the conclusion of your fiscal year, you make an amendment to your 2023 budget to make sure everything's reconciled. Cities do it on a regular basis. As I said, it's really a housekeeping issue.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions or comments from the council regarding this item?
No questions.
Any?
No.
No further comments from the council? I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-30, Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2023 Budget.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Leonard, seconded by Vice Mayor Lingowski. Roll call, Councilwoman Vayeron, yes. Vice Mayor Lingowski, yes. Mayor O'Connor, yes. Councilwoman Leonard, yes. Councilwoman Martinez, yes. Motion carries five zero.
Additionally, we have before us an application for consideration for the Arts in Public Places Board and then further discussion of term limits. Do we have some explanation on staff on this item? I certainly have some questions.
Mayor received a Mayor received a application for consideration of board appointment from Ms. Johanna Jimenez. She is aware that you all were reviewing it at today's meeting. However, I do not see her in the audience. The application is part of the agenda packet.
So I wasn't aware that there was a vacancy on the Arts in Public Places Board, and I wasn't aware that we advertised that vacancy.
No, it wasn't an advertisement per se. It was already part of the initial board. There just hasn't been anyone that's been interested to provide us with an application to present to council.
So there was a vacancy?
Yes, we had an alternate member.
And then, before we get into that discussion, what are the current term limits?
Council has not set term limits for the Arts in Public Places Board.
All right, so let's iron that out. And then what I personally would like to see is I'd like to see us advertise for that vacancy. You know, we're adding almost 100 residents to the city every month. We close about 25 homes, bigger families of four. That's a week. Actually, we're adding about 400 people to our city a month. I think we need to advertise this vacancy rather than just take what comes in as an application. That's just my personal opinion. But also in that, we definitely need term limits, and I'd like to see them staggered. You know, I would like to see whether we decide on two years, but I'd like to see every two years, same as our council, every two years succeeds opening up. Now, that doesn't mean that the same person can't submit their application again and we consider it. But I would like that type of a process to be adopted.
What we'll do is bring at the next meeting an ordinance for the term limits on a staggered basis because we'll have to amend the existing ordinance to impose the term limits.
So with that being said, I would love someone to make a motion to table this item. But in the interim, can we please put something out, whether it be social media, Facebook, that there is a vacancy on the Arts in Public Places Board? And that way perhaps there's some, you know, interest because as mayor, I didn't even know. So it's very possible that the public didn't know.
Before we make a motion to table, for the staggering of the terms, we should have a consensus. It's the city council, maybe the city clerk, and the city manager on drafting that. You don't want to come back and they have to do it again. So I'm not sure if the council must have decided.
Well, it's going to be two readings, Vice Mayor. So you're going to have first crack at it, and then if you want to amend it, you can amend it on the first reading before it comes back on the second reading because you'll have a discussion in the first reading.
And let's also provide for some alternates, at least one.
Yes, sir. And I'll let you decide, one alternate, two alternates.
Okay.
So.
If I can just, I apologize. If I just can clarify, there currently are five board members and two alternates.
And what, we're going to add a sixth board member?
There is a vacancy for one alternate.
And that's what this is providing for?
Correct.
Okay. Let's still put it out there because we didn't even know. I mean, that makes more sense. I thought the board was full. I'm surprised that we didn't have two alternates existing, but just that our growth is so tremendous, I think it would be worth at least putting something out to the public before we make an appointment to any committee seat.
Has it been an open application? It's just been, no timeline? As far as a deadline, I mean?
No, there was no active notice. There was just on the website under advisory boards, it's noted for all the vacancies that we have currently for the board. So there was a vacancy on the education board, and then there was also a vacancy for the Art in Public Places Board.
I mean, I certainly commend Ms. Jimenez for doing the due diligence to find the open seat and expressing her interest in going for it. I just feel strongly, before we make any appointments, let's put it out there to the whole the whole city and let everybody know who may not be aware that there's a vacancy for an alternate. And then we should also definitely discuss the term lengths. Are there any lengths as it is, or it's just that?
Well, generally, board members serve at the pleasure of a council anyway. So you can decide if you want to revisit the appointments every year. Some cities do. If you have a very good board, you reappoint everybody. If somebody doesn't show up on a regular basis, you don't reappoint he or she. Or you can do two years. So you really have.
I'm pretty certain there is a term.
No. I mean, it's a city between us internally before bringing it forward to you, but the final ordinance does not include a term.
Interesting, okay.
Education Board does.
The Education Board does. All right, so let's.
So if I might just get a consensus, every two years, would you have three seats, two years, two seats, one year?
Correct. That's what I would like to see. Just model it after our after our council in the terms of it being three and two, but it should be every two years instead of four.
Oh, I would go four, yeah.
No.
Yeah, you want to be able to revisit your boards.
So I mean, we could do a consensus right now.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Yes, sir.
So is the council okay with that? We do three seats, two years, two seats, two years, and have them staggered?
Well, okay.
Otherwise, it's just all the seats every two years.
So somebody's going to have to, I'll look at it, you may have to ask for the resignations of the board. Start fresh and point two seats for one year.
Why couldn't we just modify the existing seat numbers?
Well, we can't.
I don't care if we pick up.
Yeah, I don't want to offend anybody by picking seats. I don't know who's sitting there. I'll come with an ordinance, circulate, I'll speak to you individually prior to putting the item on the agenda. You can give it some thought.
Okay.
You might reach out to the board members, see what they're comfortable with, but.
Yeah, perhaps there's some existing board members who wouldn't mind cycling out.
Right.
Yeah, in the shorter term, you're saying?
Yeah, in the shorter term.
Yeah.
Excellent, okay. Otherwise, I think two years.
Otherwise, but it's also easy to, I would ask you to consider revisiting it every year of the calendar month. That way, everybody sits equally. And if everybody wants to continue to serve, you reappoint them.
Right.
It's been successful in other jurisdictions. And if you have a vacancy, you fill it.
Right.
And if somebody has unexcused absences, you don't reappoint them.
True. I mean, even when it comes to committees and chairs, they're always, you know, they serve a certain amount.
Whatever he, whatever you all decide.
Somebody else be the chair.
Usually that's a year, but yeah.
Yes. Well, what do you guys think? What do you want to do?
I wouldn't go above two.
I think two sounds fair and right.
And then they can reapply, you know, they're.
Try and draft a first version that includes for two-year terms.
Everybody's going to be two years.
Two-year terms, but with the ability to reapply, so no term limits.
Well, you're not going to term limits. It's again, subject to you. You can leave somebody anytime you want.
But let's revisit their, let's revisit their tenure every two years.
That's up to you. You could ask to put on the agenda every year if you want.
Right, and I think we're deciding on doing it two years.
I thought it's revisit every year, right, like two years. And doesn't matter.
Like every September.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a visit, but if we, who knows what happens in between, so let's just do it every year. It could be a quick agenda item, hopefully.
Yeah, what happened is your very efficient city clerk's office will reach out to the individuals and they'll say, dude, do you wish to continue to serve?
Yeah, I think the yearly sound is, that's pretty good.
Okay, I just want to give some opportunity for new, you know, new people.
Yeah, that's why you do it every year.
Okay, fine. I'm okay with it. Every year? All right, there you have it. There's your consensus.
Appreciate it.
And is everybody okay with putting a notice out before we add in this alternate?
Yes, but could I add that we clarify what the board does for art in public places? Can we put that on the record, just an explanation of what is the responsibilities of the board?
Let's include that in the notes. You want that?
For now, yeah.
Basically, the Arts in Public Places Committee reviews the applications for, from the new commercial construction entities that are over 1 million in build cost. And they, that committee evaluates their desire, whether it's to put the new construction builds can choose their own art. It still has to go up to the committee and then eventually us for final approval. We get the final say. The committee gets to review it. Or if they don't decide that they want to choose their art, that money goes into a fund and the committee will make a recommendation of what they think that money should go towards in terms of the art in public places. And then it's still a recommendation to us as the council, and then we get the final say. So basically, is that the gist of the Arts in Public Places Committee?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk? You seem like you want to say yes, too. Sure, please read it.
Art in Public Places Program, this is Article 24.2, Section 1 of the Ordinance. Purpose, it is the purpose of the city of Westlake to establish a formal requirement for the funding, acquisition, placement, and maintenance of artwork within the city of Westlake. The requirement and the policies and procedures that implement it are referred to as the City of Westlake Art in Public Places Program. It is the intention of this program to promote public art, to enhance the economic development of this new community, establish the city's identity as a place where the public art thrives and promote the beauty and interests of spaces visible to the public in both private and public development projects.
There you go. Excellent. Let's put that along with the actual resolution that talks about, you know, plus a million, a million over, et cetera. Let's put that in the notice, advertising the vacancy in the alternate position. And bring it up at the next meeting as well as the draft
Yes, sir.
of the amended ordinance for the term limits. We visited it every year.
Does council have any direction on how long they would like the notice to be public?
I mean, we could put it on the page. Well, you need.
We need to use first. Right?
I mean, the alternate's still going to be an empty seat until we fill it. So let's, let's say, put it up immediately and take it down a week before the meeting so that we have enough time to gather the information and then get it to us to review it.
Which meeting would you like?
Next one?
December?
Sure.
So one month?
A month. So three weeks?
We have to read the ordinance.
Can you draft that pass?
Well, the alternates, this is to fill the alternate seats. An alternate seat still needs to get filled. We're just letting the public know.
Okay. You're going to have several items of action. You're going to fill the vacancy.
Yep.
And then you're going to consider on first reading, amending the ordinance to address the terms.
But this is just to let the public know that there is a vacancy that can be applied for.
Okay.
Excellent.
So the application period itself will not be open. This is just notice that there is an opening.
The application period has been open, apparently. That's how we got them.
Right. But now do we give a deadline?
Well, the deadline will be.
Application.
Right, the deadline for the notice, I'm just saying the notice would be a week before the meeting so that you can have enough time to get the applications, organize them, and then get them to us so that we could review them at least a week before the meeting.
I have another comment.
Sure.
Okay. I'm all for that, but the other part is what our city attorney had mentioned is there is the possibility if the ordinance changes that everybody has to resign or they're all removed. Now, we have to start the process all over again, so that person we might select next month might have to come back again in January.
Well, you don't have to, but you're right. How far you want.
If we decide that that's the process.
Right.
Right now, we're deciding just to make it review their tenure.
I'm fine with that.
On an annual basis.
My thing is it's another step for that person.
Well, they might just get a year. Well, not even a year. They might just get until whatever month we decide to review it in.
Okay.
So that their tenure may only be six months as an alternate, or three months, or.
It's long.
Month we decide to review the, to review the. We do it on an annual basis and we say we do it in
Beginning of the fiscal.
January, and you might only get a month.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's a decision we'll have to make.
It's fine.
And just let staff take that into consideration.
Yes, sir.
When they draft the first reading. Then three weeks.
So I'll have it closed when we close out the agenda?
Perfect.
And so that way it'll be prepared for you all for review.
Excellent.
I have my direction, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so do we need a motion to table this?
Yes, sir. Motion to table the appointment.
I'll make a motion to table the appointment.
A second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Lingowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Vice Mayor Lingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vayeron?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great team. Great leadership. City Council comments, Councilwoman Leonard.
Mr. Mayor, I have no comments for this evening. But happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans coming up.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez?
I do have a few things I would like to bring up. We have Palm Beach County Days coming up in January. I would like to make an agenda item for next meeting. If we can discuss what we would like to accomplish at Palm Beach County Days. Make sure we know who we'd like to speak to, what we're asking for, have whatever plans or documents we'd like to present and have a plan of what to run up there to accomplish. Sure, that's something we can add to next meeting's agenda? Do I need a motion for it?
I think you just need consensus. And you can request an agenda item at a time, just as a councilman.
Yeah, that's a heads up for next meeting. We'll discuss that. I'm also organizing a 5K. I tried to do it last year, the timeline just didn't work out. This year it's pushed back a little bit, I'm ironing out the details. DJ, city clerk, that's moving on. Also, want to discuss maybe having some type of event, a joint event with the HOA. I know we've had previous events and we have a lot of Western community residents maybe join our events and some of our residents might not feel the best about it. Maybe we can do a joint event with the HOA where it can be city and HOA and, uh, ci, city residents only. We can host it in our, uh, backyard right here.
Um, that would be something you'd have to discuss with the HOA and get them forward. Right, you know, that private entity, we can't tell them.
No, I'm not saying we'll tell them, but at least say maybe we can together, if we all agree on something like this, maybe we can move forward with.
Sure, I mean, they would, I don't know, what's the, uh, what's legality on that? If the city is, is behind an event, shouldn't it have to be open to the general public?
Yes, sir.
So we can't.
So we can't even.
But you can, as Councilman Martinez, you can encourage the HOA to have an event.
Right.
And it's still an HOA event that only residents can go to.
Okay.
That's something you're doing.
Right.
Martinez, the city can't officially.
Okay.
You know, sanction it or be a part of it branded wise.
Unfortunately, but, okay.
Well, I mean, I've, I don't know of a single Wellington, you know, City of Wellington event, there's only Wellington people can go, you know, it's always open to.
We also pretty, we have the master HOA.
Understood, we're not an island, the, the city's not an island. A city.
Yeah.
So.
I'm with.
HOA has that ability to do stuff like that because they're a private entity. So they can limit it to just the, the paying, you know, the mass, people who pay into the master association to use master association facilities and so on and so forth, they can do that, but I think if the city gets behind something, it should and has to be open to the general public.
Understood. Besides that, that's all I got.
What is the tentative date for the five K?
I don't want to put out tentative date and have it move and then.
Okay, so is it next year, twenty twenty-four, you're looking, okay.
Excellent, Councilwoman Valieron?
Um, I just want to congratulate the veterans and that was a very nice proclamation. Uh, and that's it, no comments for today.
Excellent. Vice Mayor Langowski?
Um, just, um, in honor of Veterans Day, if you're able to go to a local community, like Wellington has a, uh, a ceremony on Saturday, if you're able to go out and support the veterans and, and have remembrance and, um, that'd be great.
Excellent. I have a couple of things, um, I had the opportunity of, of participating in Fire Ops one oh one, uh, which was done in, in partnership between the, uh, fire union and the Palm Beach County Fire Department and Councilman Martinez, I have to tell you, I have an incredible respect for what you guys do as firefighters. It was an amazing experience. We got to use the jaws of life on, on a car and the spreaders and, and they landed the trauma hawk for us and we got up close personal with the trauma hawk and, uh, got to feel the, the full pressure of that hose.
Yeah.
It was great, it was fantastic, so that was, was something I really, really enjoyed and, uh, we gotta support our, our first responders for what they do every single day. But being able to take part in that, that was great, it was like a, you guys trained for three months. You know, Palm Beach County Fire Department is, is, I believe, one of the only departments that has a full three-month training, so our.
Uh, several others even longer, but ours.
Really, they say.
Pretty intense.
That's not what they told me at Fire Ops one oh one. But, uh, you know, we've got probably the best, the best in the state, so.
I want to argue that point.
Happy with our, our, our county's fire department. Secondly, I believe we, when we voted for the, as a council, when we voted for the, what we called it, holiday pop-up. I believe we voted it in as an annual event, I think we did that, I'm not sure a hundred percent if we did or if we didn't, but we do have a tentative date of December tenth. And I'd like, just in case we didn't, as a housekeeping item, I'd like consensus from the council that we should have the holiday event again, it was a huge hit last year and it's already dominating social media now that there's tons of vendors interested and, and lots of, uh, lots of comments from the public that they really, really, really enjoyed the holiday event and that we should have it again. So, uh, I'd like us to, I think it's already been voted in as an annual event, but in the case that it wasn't, just as a housekeeping item, I'd like us to say, sounds good, um, tentative date, December tenth.
What do we like there, or what is?
Same as last year, so basically we just did food trucks. We did, uh, we just did food trucks, we did, uh, vendors, we had Santa, I think. Free photos, but that was, you know, it was pretty much completely paid for via vendor fees and food truck fees. I believe the only cost to the city was, uh, the insurance and maybe a couple porta potties. But aside from, from that, it was all kind of self-funded based on food trucks and vendors. And it was just, uh, maybe we had a DJ, can't really remember exactly.
Much for the children besides Santa?
Did we have what, we had stuff, yeah, we had face painting, we had all that stuff, again, you know, what we take in from the food trucks and the vendors gives us a little bit of budget to do fun things for kids.
Yeah.
And then it's always those last minute things we forgot to plan for that we need to pay for. The insurance on the, we have to get a joint agreement with, with, uh, we closed down the street, I don't think we need to use the field, but we still have to ensure the event, so insurance, I think, is a cost that we ate at the last one and then a couple porta potties. Because we didn't think about that till the very end, but aside from that, it pretty much pays for itself and it was a great event, so I think we should do it again.
Do we have any consideration of stepping that up in any way this year, maybe adding a couple of things?
Budget permitting.
Okay.
But it's, it's, you know, that's our big concern, we, we ju, we're just barely on, on our own two feet, we don't have a ton of money for this stuff. So we try to keep it, you know, as self-funded as possible as not to pass that burden on to our taxpayers.
Of course.
So budget permit, you know, stepping it up would involve more vendors, more food trucks, if we can get them, that gives us a bigger budget to do more stuff.
Right.
But, you know, I'd like to keep it pretty fiscally responsible if we can.
Okay.
We still have great events, you know.
Yeah.
Pay for themselves, so.
It's a better.
Best events excluding fourth best, pretty much pays for itself.
Okay.
So that would be a way of stepping it up, but you know, as our city grows, so does the, the, the knowledge that our food trucks sell out, our vendors do very, very well, and they all talk. So that will make it bigger, which will give us some, some extra funds to, uh, you know, maybe do some extra balloon twisting or extra face painting.
Bounce houses, you know.
Bounce houses.
Anything for the kids.
Foam, whatever it is.
Santa.
Santa photos, but again, it's all, it's all kind of a moving target because we don't know until we, till we put the notice out there, we don't know how many vendors we're gonna have, how many food trucks we have, so we don't have a dollar amount.
Okay.
So we can't like make any promises, we'll have, but step one is deciding to have the event.
Yeah.
So absolutely.
That's what I'm asking for right now.
Yes, and then the application for vendors will be on the city's website, the city clerk and their staff will take care.
Staff has a form, probably, uh, they'll just change some dates from last year and they've got a process in to, to accept people and this'll be our second one, so.
Oh, man.
They've got that all figured out on the backend, we couldn't do it without them.
Yeah.
Cool, all right, so we have our consensus, yes to the event?
Yes.
Can, uh, counselor, can you visit whether or not we voted that in as annually?
I'll get with the esteemed city clerk.
And if we did it.
In the minutes.
Can you throw that on the agenda too, we're gonna have it no matter what, but can you put that on the agenda so that we?
If we need to, yes.
The zone.
Great.
Is it annually, annually, do we want to pick a certain weekend day every year that's gonna happen? That was kind of something we can easily look forward to, hey, first weekend of whatever the case may be, that way it's then calendar every year.
Does that take away some flexibility? I mean, we can agree to always have the event. And then we can look at the landscape of the calendar and see what's the best weekend to have it on.
Okay, what comes to mind that could change it?
I don't know, maybe something in the area.
But if we had ours, then maybe other people might say, hey, Westlake already has theirs.
I don't know. I, I like, I want, I want the, if we vote on it as a certain weekend, does it have to be that weekend every single?
Yes, sir.
I like the flexibility.
Sure.
Personally.
Okay.
Because then we can look at the calendar and then.
You can set the calendar a certain time in the year.
Right, so set it for December, but we get, so we also, you know, it's also almost completely volunteer organized and driven.
That's the.
And it's December, and the date was provided to me from them, so we don't always know what's on their personal calendars to try to organize it and arrange it.
Yeah.
I, I personally would like the flexibility.
Okay. Can you something?
Cool, so we'll set it for December every year, make it an annual event if it isn't already one, but the actual weekend it goes on, let's give us some wiggle room just in case.
And are citizens of Westlake allowed to volunteer and work the events, like it's?
Okay, and they are, and they do.
Yes, it's just.
Our, our ad hoc, you know, volunteer committee is, is, who gets all the kudos for making this stuff happen.
So if somebody wants to join that committee, they?
Them in the right direction and they can, we can use all the help that. Uh, we do need to look at getting the explorers again to maybe help with parking. And, that's it. Oh, so if we're gonna do parking, we do need that joint agreement with Minto because we're gonna need to park in the field. So that's something else we need to, to get, the ball rolling on.
And work with PR, PBSO.
Work with PBSO.
And fire.
Fire.
For a little, first aid pen or something.
Yep. All right, we gotta work together, but with that being said.
Wait, speaking of fire, I recently went to an event that I drove the fire trucks to and the, the fire trucks were the biggest hit of the event. So if I can get with chief back here, maybe possibly getting a station there, just drop the trucks, it would be really cool. And the kids love the hats, it was a, you just saw red running around everywhere, so.
Thank you.
That's all I got, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's great. Uh, do we have a report from our sheriff's department? If you, well, if you could.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Tell us who you are and what you got to tell us.
Just a quick introduction, Lieutenant Darla Sowers, I recently was appointed to the administrative officer for, uh, Westlake, so I will be, uh, second in, um, command with, uh, Captain Craig Turner.
Excellent, is it DeMarzo's, is Elsie DeMarzo still here?
Transferred.
Transferred.
He did, so.
Tell me anything.
Happened really quick.
Well, welcome to Westlake.
Yeah.
Very much, appreciate that. Um, so, um, for calls of service, uh, Westlake has had two thousand eight hundred and three calls for service. Of those, um, there were a hundred and sixty-nine nine-one-one calls and now there, of that was also a hundred and sixty-six traffic stops and two thousand four hundred and sixty-eight, uh, business and residential checks. Really, things were looking pretty good, there were however, four burglary, um, burglaries in construction sites and, um, one burglary to a vehicle, no burglaries to a residence. And, um, I don't know how in-depth you want me to get, but that's in a synopsis and a nutshell, that's, those were the calls of service.
Excellent.
Anybody have any questions?
No, just welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other reports? Sure.
I actually was in route pulling the parking line, you guys were already done, so. So, um, I was also there.
Yes.
One-on-one on Saturday and I was the junior guide for the A-team.
I was in the A-team.
That's right, that's right, um, and it was awesome to see you guys in the gear and handling all the equipment and going through the experience of it and so, uh, that was really cool and I'm glad to hear that you enjoyed it as well, so.
The greatest thing ever.
Yeah, I love that the organization partners with the local two-nine-two-eight to do that, so that gives you a little bit of a taste of what it is done, what's done on a daily basis and, you know, when, when there's asking for support, then you already get it, you already understand, you already know why it's important, the safety equipment, the gear, the timing, everything is, our training is so important, so thank you for participating and glad you had a, a positive experience with it, nobody passed out, so. For a second career, you know. So your, um, call volume and response time for October was a total of forty-four, um, calls in Westlake, twenty of those were medical, twelve of them were alarms, again, probably, um, smoke alarms or CO alarms or something of the effect. Five vehicle accidents, there was three assists or investigations, two inter-facility transports, meaning they took them from, uh, this Westlake, um, hospital out to another facility where they could be admitted, so there's two inter-facility transports. Um, one fire, I didn't really dig into it too much because they were only on scene thirteen minutes, so it tells me it's not really a fire, it was maybe called in as a structured fire and was coded that way, but it really is, truly wasn't a structured fire, um, and one hazardous situation. So, the average, um, dispatch handling time from taking the call to dispatching it was thirty-eight seconds. The average time from getting the tones and getting in the truck was forty-three seconds. Uh, average travel time, four minutes, thirty-three seconds for a total overall response time of five minutes and fifty-four seconds.
That's great.
Pretty good.
Awesome. Take five minutes.
Yes, too, lot better than that pickleball order.
I have none, anybody have any?
No question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister City Attorney, anything from our, uh, city attorney's office?
Thank you, no sir, nothing to report.
Anything for the city manager?
Mayor, I want to apologize for that, uh, issue with, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-three, uh, thirty. Uh, basically, I just couldn't find, get my hand on the, uh, the actual exhibit. But basically what you have is you've got the difference between what you initially budgeted for these different departments and what the actual expenditures and revenue were, that difference is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
And every area is just, is just different and it's a learning curve for each subsequent year, some areas you were, you budgeted more than you needed, some areas you didn't budget as much as you needed and the difference was two hundred and fifty-five.
Okay.
So that's what I should have said to you.
Was it two fifty in the green or two fifty in the red?
The other way, yeah.
Two fifty in the red?
Yeah, the other way, but you've had, you've got all kinds of engineering expenses, you've got a lot of things that are going on that, that you really wouldn't have a crystal ball to be able to.
Ken, so that quarter million dollars, can we, can we afford it, are we in charge?
Oh, yeah, no, no, I tell you, fine, no, you're in good shape, you're in very good shape.
Good, yeah.
I just apologize for that, I just.
Very good, thank you, sir.
And Ken will be back in action as of Monday, so.
Yep, I spoke to him today, he asked me why I wasn't up there helping him load the truck, so. Told him I would be happy to help. All right, let's move forward to public comments and requests, this section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk when you are called to speak, please go to the podium, I'll meet your device. Prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record, do we have any public comments?
Mayor received no previous comment cards, we'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand.
Please.
Ms. Kaplan?
To the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Nina Kaplan, five four five nine, Saint Rosa Lane, Trust Wing. Um, I just wanted some clarity on the HOA issue that we talked about in terms of what you were suggesting. Were you talking about the, um, fee that we all pay?
Initially, I was correct, but as the mayor stated, being the city, we can't have a private event. We can't back a private event as a city itself, the HOA can, because residents privately pay into the HOA.
Okay. All right, because that, it was confusing because some, you know, there's a variety of HOAs, I'm assuming, I know we have one in Preston.
But we have all the individuals, then we all have the master.
Into the, Matt, you call it the master?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
Another question here, oh, um, in terms of the, uh, boards, the issues surrounding the continuity of when individuals' term is, I know we had some guidelines, um, in the education, we moved the advisory board, but I don't know that we were following. So my question is, should we have a consistency across the boards or does it not make a difference? For terms, term limits, term duration, and are those the only two boards that we have? The public places? The public places and the youth and education?
I believe so, and I personally like the idea of some consistency. We could make all of our committees kind of the same. Um, but that's up to the council to discuss and and that's also up to uh, our counselor to advise us on.
Yes, sir. We can, we'll certainly have that opportunity at the next meeting.
Great.
Then I have one last comment and a question, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place to ask it, but it's really about what happens, because people in um, our community have thought about this and it's always something I've wondered about. If you have a um, need to call an ambulance and it comes and gets you, how do they decide where to take you? And do you have, because a lot of people in our communities come from different areas and have, you know, physicians and such.
I can personally, I can personally answer that one. So depending on the type of call that comes in, depending on your injuries or why you're calling, typically the rescue will take you to the most appropriate, closest facility. Given your, depending on how critical you are, you might request a further hospital. And you would sign paperwork stating, I understand I'm going to bypass certain hospitals to go to the one that I want to.
Thank you, anywhere.
So.
Sure, sure, point. Sure, point. Yes, ma'am.
So I can explain you a little bit also about this because I work in the hospital. So depending, like he said, depending as your injury, they will take you whatever. Let's say you have a, you have a stroke, they will take you to a trauma hospital. The closest one, because the trauma hospital will be the only one that has the medication for a stroke. Or if you have an ortho, a a broken bone or something like that, they will take you to the best hospital. They will have the surgeons depending on your injury to do, to fix your bones. You know, an ortho hospital, the best one, a clo, like the closest one. In all these, taking into account also what your family member or you prefer. Because sometimes you will have some history in different hospitals. So they will take you to the one, the hospital that you have a history from, or the one that you did a surgery before already, but they will take into account of what your family member said or what you said, if you're able to say something.
Mainly depending on the severity, like I said. If it's severe enough, there's almost no question you're going to the closest, most appropriate facility.
And and just for the record, I want to make sure these are not statements by, made by council members on behalf of the city. These are not city policies. It's not a city issue.
Yeah.
It's a, it's outside the scope of the city's authority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Disclaim you there. Any other public comments?
I received no public comment cards prior to the meeting. We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise our virtual hand. Looks like we have a comment from Ms. Torres. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Olivia Torres, five eight four seven, Whipperwell Circle. I just wanted to ask a little bit more about the amendment to the budget. I'm just looking through the packet and I don't see explicitly like the number two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars.
I can get that. One second.
It was uh, it was right after the uh, uh, resolution. You'll see a page. It's actually page forty five. It's exhibit A. And what it referred to was uh, the revenue section. You'll see a hundred and twenty thousand and then you'll see on the expenditure side, three seventy five, but it's not just three seventy five in that one area. You've got areas where you are under budget for some professional services. It was over in some services, depending on uh, the nature of what was going on inside the community.
All right. Yes, thank you. I see it.
No problem. Thank you. Any other public comments?
We'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. You'll have three minutes. May I have no additional comments?
There being no further business, I will adjourn the meeting at six fifty four P M. Thank you all and my colleagues for the leadership.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clark. Can I have you execute this proclamation right?